All right, I have six o'clock on my clock. So do we have a quorum? I see Lisa and Kathy. Aaron was here.
I think she's here. Yep.
Okay. I guess the only one missing is Robert Coker.
Yeah, I emailed him again with the link. I haven't heard anything back from him. So I guess if you want, you can go ahead and get started. I haven't heard anything from him at all.
Okay. All right, well, we have a quorum, so we can start. It is Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. It's six o'clock. And I'll call the meeting to order for the regular meeting of the Clear Lake Planning Commission. And why don't we begin with the roll call vote at this time?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner McCarrick? I see you. Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Vice Chair Fitz?
Here.
And Chair Bean?
Here.
And Commissioner Coker is not on the call.
May we stand and have the pledge of allegiance at this time? And we can begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. Good to see everybody, such as it is. We only have one item on the agenda, which is consideration of zoning ordinance amendment ZOA 2020-01. So we'll be conducting a public hearing at this time and considering public and staff comments. And we have three resolutions on the agenda. It seems to me those are enacting resolutions to the zoning ordinance, recommending adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment, recommending adoption of a new design review procedure, and recommending adoption of new design standards that implement the new ordinance. So the ordinance requires three resolutions to enact it, as far as I'm understanding, since I understand it. So at this time, why don't we open the public hearing? And we'll have a presentation by the staff on considering the zoning ordinance amendment ZOA 2020-01.
Thank you, Chair Bean, Commissioners. I'll kind of give an overview. And then if Suzanne or Mr. Price have anything to add, they can jump in. But as the commission knows, we had this before you about a month ago. There were various things that we needed to be addressed. The primary thing that we talked about was livestock and vacation rentals. And so I just have a few slides here. I will share my screen, and we can go over those and then address any questions you Okay. So July 28th, this item today is continued from the July 28th. Okay, so agricultural regulations. There was some sort of inconsistencies in the table related to cannabis, which we've addressed. And then there was some additional legal review needed related to regulations for accessory dwelling units and consistency with new state guidelines. There was some discussion about mobile home installation and the age of those. The commission made some comments about supporting that type of thing. And then we needed to do some additional checking with legal on that. And then vacation rentals. You had, we discussed some correspondence with Mr. Bornstein from Highlands Harbor Association. I believe he's actually on the call tonight, but I have kind of some updates on that. I would say that at this time, we think that this section needs a little bit more work. And so it would be staff's recommendation to adopt what you have before you tonight related to vacation rentals. But we'll go through some of these in a little more detail. And I guess I'll kind of give the overview. If you have questions as we go through, just jump in and interrupt. So the agriculture stuff, everything was consolidated into one table. We realized that we probably should include the industrial and open space zoning, along with rural residential for allowing agricultural uses. We added provisions for 4-H and F-FAE projects similar to what the county regulations are. And then small livestock and limited beekeeping was added to be allowed in R1 or the low-density residential. And then, of course, RR industrial and open space regulations are less restrictive. And you should see that in the track changes in your packet. And I can pull that up if you want us to look at that a little bit more closely. I would say on that issue, we didn't receive any, well, there's very little public comment that we got formally, which we'll go over later. But I did have a chance to connect with some of the folks who expressed their opinions last time on what was proposed, and they seem to be pleased with the proposed revisions. Cannabis, this was brought up, I believe, Commissioner Davis and removed from the table to clear up some confusion about the Bayzoni. And then, of course, it's all just delegated to the cannabis combining district on the zoning maps as far as where those uses are allowed. Accessory dwelling units allowed in the open space district. There were some sections where conditional use permit approval was reflected as being required, and that's not consistent with state law. And then there were a couple of changes to the parking standards that we realized needed to be addressed. Manufactured home installation of our older mobile homes, state law requires that they have the same permitting process as SFPs. You're not allowed to make it more restrictive on that. And then apparently there was some cleanup related to mobile home parks from PACs to residential there. But the 10-year limit on mobile homes is still included in the draft. So vacation rentals, what we have in the document currently was, there was a discussion about adding owner occupied definition, which was 51% of the year or more. But we did get some additional comments. I believe it was earlier, well, I guess it would have been last week, from Mr. Bornstein and some other members of their board. And I think I would just like to pull up the email if I can find it here. Okay. So you can kind of browse through that. One of the keys here is that the association, I guess, reconsidered the idea of being involved. So the way we had it written up was that in order to have a vacation rental within the Highlands Harbor sort of area, the city would ask for essentially an approval from the association on that particular use. And they've decided that they do not want to handle it that way. And so there's some legal issues. So their request at this time is just to eliminate the ability to have a vacation rental within the Highlands Harbor subdivision. And there's some complications with that. We're not sure that that's something legally we would recommend to the commission. And so at this time, we feel like we need to do a little bit more work on addressing that. And of course, we would like to continue working with Mr. Bornstein and other members of that association and try to find some type of common ground where they feel like the negative issues that have been a result of vacation rentals in their neighborhood can be more adequately addressed, hopefully without creating one area of the city where they're banned altogether. So, you know, if the commission would like, we probably should have sent this email to you already just to look at. But that's kind of where we are on that. We really, we're hoping to have some of this addressed and have some revised language for the commission tonight. But it ended up being just not enough time to get everything sorted out. And so we'd be recommending that the commission, again, not take any action on the zoning ordinance itself tonight and allow us probably not 30 days to bring back some recommended changes related to this. So we'll back to the presentation real quick here. And I think this, the rest of these slides are just from the previous presentation. So I guess with that, we can just try to address any questions that the commission has unless there's something that looks like Gary has something he would like to add.
Yes, on six, so two, we just received an email from Matt. Let's see. Matt Gilthond from California Homes. I don't know who California Homes is, but they're saying they're a nonprofit organization devoted to legal tools to address California's housing crisis. And so they have submitted an email I shared with Alan and Suzanne just now. It just said, they were indicating that there may be some inconsistencies with our regulations to the state's regulations. And I do wish to tell the commission that we've already shared the draft regulations with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and they did approve the regulations. So I think the comments made, they almost seemed like they didn't really read the full set of regulations. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we can bring this, we can respond to this at the next meeting. But we didn't get that comment from them. That's all I have.
We'll have to take a look at that. But maybe, since you brought that up, can you talk a little bit about your understanding related to the, I'm assuming that his comments were related to the mobile homes? Is that what you're saying?
No, they were all related to accessory dwelling units.
Oh, okay.
And I don't believe there was anything on mobile homes on there. But they were talking about how.
I haven't seen the email, so we'll just have to review it. And if it's something that's relevant, we'll bring back some information to the commission. So I can bring up any section of the ordinance if you'd like to look at it, but just available to answer any questions the Commissioners may have. And it looks like Mr. Bornstein has raised his hand, so at some point you would like to make a comment when you're ready, Chair Bean.
Well, why don't we go ahead and do that? Let's accept public testimony at this time.
Hi, folks. Thanks for making this Zoom thing available. It's very convenient. I just wanted to give some quick background about the vacation rental thing in Highlands Harbor. Our CCNRs actually prohibit any commercial use at all in the development. And the commercial use, and the CCNRs and the bylaws give the board the authority to interpret what the scope of the commercial use. And the board has voted unanimously, and the members have also overwhelmingly approved this, that commercial use would include vacation rentals. So, but just so you'll know, if the board would be giving permits in the Highlands Harbor development for vacation rentals, they'll be permitting something which violates our CCNRs. So that's our primary objection. We've had a lot of people saying, well, it's prohibited, why are they going to allow it? So that's the first point I'd like to make. I'm not going to go over the problems we've had. Everybody has problems, and we talked about them. I also request that if there's a legal issue involved, that someone communicate with me about what it is. Because I've been hearing a lot about this. I have quite a lot of experience with the law in this area. And if, I mean, the zoning authority seems to extend to controlling the area where any particular use would be in on the basis of potential nuisance, just like you don't, in certain neighborhoods, you don't allow cannabis factory. Well, why not? It's a legal business. Well, because you want to control it into an area to try to prevent nuisance complaints from people. We think it's the same thing. And if someone really does have a legal objection, I really request that they communicate with me so I can know what the heck it is, because I don't understand it right now. There may, I might be wrong, but I'd like to have that. Also, just to be clear, Alan mentioned that we sort of changed our position. Well, we really didn't take a position on this thing because I found out about it two hours before the meeting. I didn't have time to go to the board. So I really, I have put in a request to get notified for this meetings on the website. For some reason, that's not working. So my other request would be that I get notified in time when we have new language so that I can have time to convene the board and talk about with the board so I don't have to embarrass myself again by writing an email and having the board say, no, we don't want to do that. So that's the final request. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Appreciate this opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other public testimony? I recall looking at the town hall website for input, and there was, well, I looked, there was one person that made a comment. Just wondering if we could, if you've all seen that or if we could have that read. It's not very long, very brief.
Yeah, I think there was one comment that came in via email and then the one you're referring to. So I think Ms. Swanson will read those for us.
Okay. As long as it's not over three minutes.
They're pretty short.
Okay.
The first public comment on this item comes from email, Stephen Schwartz, who states, "This longtime resident of Clear Lake does not believe that the number on chickens a citizen of this town should be a concern for the city of Clear Lake. I live in the avenues which nature is of larger lot sizes and country living. Please deal with barking dogs, dirt bikes, erosion control, noncompliance issues, and leave our chickens alone. I further believe that you all could not have picked a worse time to take on or even suggest taking away somebody's chickens. Not a worse time. What's wrong with you people? Martin O'Leary, respectfully, Stephen Schwartz."
Thank you.
And the second comment is, as Chair Bean stated, on our town hall portal, from Dylan Hongola, who states, "I do want to say that these revised codes for animals sound much better than before. I must ask if consideration has been given to owning chickens in medium residential. It is currently allowed, and most city lots are big enough to accommodate the space requirements. I know many people already have chickens in this area, and it doesn't seem to be a problem, myself included, and I own a third of an acre. My chickens are well cared for and don't bother anyone. In fact, when we have a surplus of eggs, I give them to my elderly neighbor." That concludes his statement.
Thank you, Melissa.
So Chair Bean, just a couple of things on that real quick. I just want to, I think the commission knows, but in case anyone in the public is watching, the proposed regulations related to livestock, including chickens, are much more favorable to those wanting to raise chickens or other livestock than what's currently allowed in the city. So I just wanted to make that point. We tried to do a little bit of research on the one gentleman's comment. I don't know if we were ever able to connect with him. I think we tried connecting with him to get some more information, because currently medium density residential doesn't allow any livestock. And so his comment was a little confusing on exactly what's going on there. But just wanted to make sure and reinforce the point that what we're currently recommending based on the commission's direction at the last meeting is much more favorable to raising livestock, including chickens, than what's currently on the books today.
All right. All right, thank you.
Is this much different than county after revisions?
It's pretty similar to the county, but it does, as we talked last time, go one step.
The revision landing?
Yeah. It goes one step further from what the county allows, and the low-density residential lots would be allowed to have a small number of chickens and, I think, rabbits or something like that. So it's basically modeled off of the county ordinance, but actually takes it one step further so people can raise a small number of one normal residential lot.
So it is allowable to raise chicken on a smaller residential lot? What's the minimum size? Do you have that as far as minimum size for having additional animals, farm animals? Is there a minimum?
Yeah, I think, let's see, I'm not seeing her right now. 5,000 square feet, which is the standard law.
Oh, I have to resave the track changes because we have incorporated the new agricultural regulations. But we don't.
Oh, okay. So I need to pull it up again.
Yeah, it should be on the website, updated.
Well, I know that page 58, page 54 and 58 of our manuscript regarding our zoning ordinance has that, it has several.
Yeah, apparently I have the older version pulled up. I apologize.
Yeah, page 58. Gary and I had a chance to, call me and go over some of the changes so that I could look at what we had. But let's see, page 58 is where the item H, livestock and poultry, was all revised.
Can you, from there on the section that talks about, I'm sorry.
Well, it just, yeah, it just says agriculture operations and definitions of adult, refers to an animal six months of age. Livestock includes, but is not limited to, small poultry, including ducks, chickens, and rabbits. Raising small livestock up to four adults per 5,000 square feet in LDR, otherwise up to 50 per acre. So I guess this is saying if you have a 5,000 square foot, you can, up to four.
Up to four, no roosters, yeah, right.
Okay, excluding roosters. Okay. So that's the updated revised condition. And you know what? I just have to commend, commend the staff and city for listening to the public at our last meeting, because this was a really hot issue for many of them, because they have livestock of some kind or another. And I'm just really thankful that we caught this and were able to revise it to reflect our community.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other, let's, we've virtually closed the public hearing portion. Why don't we just go to Commissioner comments or questions? Kathy, do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to address?
I do. So you guys sent a letter out to 18 different agencies for their public comment, and I'm wondering if we got anything back from them on that?
Nothing, no, no comments at all. I did get, have some correspondence with Chief Sepeda from the fire district, and he said that he didn't think they got it initially. And so I sent it to him again and told him that we'd be happy to be in to address any questions. But that's the only correspondence that I've had about it.
And on the list here, I see that you have the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, but we didn't include the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. And I'm just curious why we don't also notify like PG&E, AT&amp;T, some of the places that actually have some critical infrastructure within the city. I think, I'm just curious why we don't send it out to them for their review as well.
We can do that.
Well, I generate the list, and so I do apologize if I oversaw the Clear Lake Chamber. So we do need to send it to them. Relative to utilities, you know, we don't typically ever get comments back from zoning codes from public utilities simply because they're private property regulations. But we could still, we could do that, but I can tell you that in my experience, we'll never get anything from them. And we're, you know, we have a month. We can send it out again and have those folks take a look at it. When we produced the regulations over the last three years, we were involved with collaborating with various agencies and departments to develop the regulations. They were not developed in a vacuum. We outreach the police, the fire, the filling departments, enforcement, everyone at the city has been part of this partnership in producing the regulations.
And don't most cities also control their own water and sewers so they wouldn't have to put out to water and the three different water companies in our area in the sewer? Because most cities already have that infrastructure within their own system?
Good point. You should probably do that.
Well, I mean, I like to clarify, I think the water utilities in Lake County special districts did receive it. What Kathy's saying is that the private utilities like AT&amp;T, I guess MediaCom, PG&E, it wasn't sent to them.
Well, what I was saying there is, he was making a comment that they normally work closely, but in those cities, you already have part of that infrastructure within the city guidelines. So I, I spoke with one of the water companies, and they got the letter a week before our meeting. I spoke with special districts, they haven't acknowledged being able to find the letter. So in the, the different, I followed up just to see if some of them had or hadn't received it, had they received it in enough time. So I think we need to relook how we send it to them. We need to somehow follow up and make sure that they got it. So they're allowed ample time to actually come back and put input in towards all of this, because it, it could possibly affect some of them, if not all. I don't know, but I, in fairness, we need, as a city, we need to work closely with all those different groups and, and make sure it will work for them as well.
No, we hear you, and I, we're going to be sending everything out via email, or I think certified mail in the future, just so we have some record of what happened.
Yeah, and just for the record, certified mail slows stuff down, so you're going to have to give them more time.
Yeah, I think, I mean, anymore, I mean, email, we can see when it was received, if it was open, all that type of stuff. So it's a lot easier for us, especially with large files like this, just to email a link to our website, and then we can make sure that everyone got it.
Right. So for me, I'd like to be able to have it sent out to them again and make sure everybody gets it and give them ample time before we all go and vote on this, to see if they have any comment on it.
We can do that.
Anything else, Commissioner Davis?
No, that is it.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. You need to turn on your microphone.
I can't hear you. It looks like she's...
I cannot hear Commissioner McCarrick.
She's not muted. I don't know.
We, we can't read lips. Are you okay?
She's good.
All right. I'm sorry you're having sound diff, there it goes, here it is. Try unmuting your, your microphone.
She is.
It's funny, yeah. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Is there, okay, she sent a, she sent a chat to everybody that she was appreciating all the hard work that's gone into this. Okay, so as I understand, our, our action tonight, Mr. Flora, is to table this action on the consideration of zoning ordinance amendment, to table that until our next meeting?
Yeah, I think that's what we would recommend. You know, we talked a little bit about the vacation rental issue, and we want to work with the Highlands Harbor Association to figure out something that works for all of us. And so we, we're recommending that we continue this public hearing to September 22nd, and hopefully we'll have everything wrapped up by then, and the commission can, can adopt.
You said September 22nd?
That's what we're recommending, if that works for the commission.
Okay, all right.
It'd be the second regularly scheduled meeting in, in September.
In September. All right. Then we will move to table this until September the 22nd meeting, and proceed after additional information is acquired. Do we have city manager or commissioner reports?
I don't, I don't think I have too much to report on, unless the commissioners have any questions about, you know, we just continue to work on a lot of projects. And, you know, there's, there's really a lot going on out there still, but we do have a pre-application meeting that'll be coming up pretty soon for a project at the corner of Highway 53 and Old Highway 53. We've been talking to the developer there for a while, and they're trying to kind of finalize their plan. And so we're hoping within the next couple of weeks, we'll have a pre-development meeting with them, and then they'll prepare their application. The only other thing that I, I thought like, maybe I should share is that we have had some requests for additional cannabis permits to be issued, and there's been kind of a lot of movement on the existing ones. And so we did have an initial discussion with the city council last week about that. They requested a little bit of additional information to come back to them, so we'll probably be talking about this again at the meeting next week, and then they'll give us direction on kind of a draft change, any draft change to the ordinance. And of course, once that's prepared, we would then bring it back to the planning commission for review and recommendation to the city council. So I'm not sure how that's going to play out yet, but I just thought it would be something that should mention to you. I guess it's possible that it could come back at the, at the second meeting in September, where we're talking about the zoning ordinance anyway. But I don't think I have anything else to, to report on right now.
All right. Well, thank you for the, the heads up on, on that issue. I think we've covered any future agenda items. I guess we've already discussed those. Any final comments from anyone, commissioners or city manager, before we adjourn? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Who'd like to make that motion?
I'll move.
All right. And to move to adjourn seconded, who'd like to second it? I think, I think Erin just seconded it, right? Okay. All right, move to second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or just, yeah, there you go.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, meeting is hereby adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate talking with you this week.
Yeah, all the commissioners are welcome to contact me for any technical questions on any of this stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work.